Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here today. I lost my agenda. Today is September 11th, 2025. Thanks, Joey. This is a regular called council meeting for the City of Fountain Inn. Thank you all for being here tonight. If y'all wouldn't mind bowing your heads for our invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day in our community and for the opportunity to serve our great citizens, business owners, and visitors, and our employees. On today, the anniversary of September 11th, 2001, we thank you for the continued blessings you have given our nation and that you continue to heal those all across this nation who have been impacted by that fateful day and will continue to be impacted for years to come. We also ask you for peace in our nation, for the end of political violence in our nation, and for your caring hand over our community at all times. In your name we pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have some new employees we'd like to introduce to the public. I'm going to ask Chief Fortenberry to come up first.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come introduce our newest employee, Marisol. If you'll stand up. This is Marisol LaBoy. She comes with us with several years of experience from a couple of different states, state government experience, and she is in our records section as our records technician here at the police department.
Welcome to the team. Chief Alexander.
Mayor, Council, introduce Christopher Gibson. Comes to us from Anderson County. Has a little experience under his belt, but he'll be going to recruit school beginning Monday. So for the next 10 weeks, he'll be at Spartanburg getting all those basic classes out of the way. Excited to have him. Thank you for letting us have him.
Welcome to the team. Welcome.
Now, Chief, he does bake cookies, too, does he?
He does not bake cookies.
Okay, great. I don't want you guys gaining any more weight.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to introduce Eric Reed. He is our newest sewer storm water technician here in Department of Public Works. He comes to us from the private sector with great experience. He's really excited to join the team. He's going to show a great job. He's a new father, so he's kind of joined the city, started his career in this public sector, and he's really enjoyed it so far. We're glad to have him.
Welcome to the team. Congratulations. Bryson, I think you're standing up here for item eight.
I'll just stay up here and continue it on. So I'm sure you're aware of the Step It Up Wellness Competition we just had here. It was a great competition. It really did a direct job of bringing all departments together to kind of focus on health and wellness, and even heard people talking about changing their diets because, of course, they want to get more steps in, increase the competition factor, right, and kind of be that top one. That only became a problem when Mr. Chad Chandler here came up with his total steps of 1,591,949.
Over three months.
Yeah, over three months, yep. And majority of those steps were done on the job maintaining our parks as well. So kudos to him.
Great. Thank you.
There you go. No, you're good.
Chad, take a seat. It's all right.
He's earned it.
We're glad to have him here and really show the initiative he did. He really went above and beyond to get those steps and show really what all he does and how much care he takes in to maintain our parks. But during this time, everybody kind of got together, and we had over 25 million steps logged amongst all employees who committed to this competition along the way. We had some of our million-step club winners, I'd like to announce them if you don't mind having a sense here. Of course, Chad with his 1.5. We had Christopher Moore with 1.2 million. Hector Zapata with 1.26. Then we had Stephen Pearson came in with 1.1. Bel Savitsky with 1.1 as well. And Yours Truly with 1.07. Then, of course, Lori came in with 1.05. We had Jeffrey Brazil with 1.02. And then Heather Johnson came in with 1.001 million steps. So kudos to them as well for achieving that.
Thank you, Bryson.
Bryson, I just want to say that I have had some frequent interaction with your team the last couple, few weeks probably. They are the nicest people, and they do the best job. I'm just, it's just amazing to me that their attitude is so good. So thank you, and please tell them that.
Of course, of course. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bryson. All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public forum. We only have one person signed up. Marnie Short-Hanley. Hey, Marnie.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I feel like that million-step conversation dovetails perfectly into why I'm here to talk about Aunt Het, which is coming up, where I probably will also put on 1.2 million steps that day. You have this information in your boxes, so I did leave that. The Aunt Het Festival is coming up October 4th. But before we have the Aunt Het Festival next Thursday, we're doing a meet and greet with our candidates. Mayor, you and I had already spoken about that, and I'm hoping that you'll be there as well to share. The rest of council, I know that all of the seats are not elected. You're all elected, of course, but you're not all up for election this time, so any candidates that are not up for election are also welcome to join us. Please be there at the mill from 5:00 to 7:00 on next Thursday. We'll have Go Fountain Inn. I think the questions are probably going to be the same exact questions that were in Go Fountain Inn, so you don't have to expound very much on that, but you can add your thoughts to whatever you shared with them. But we'll make sure that you get the candidate questions beforehand, but I believe they will be the same. For Aunt Het, we know that the roads are a little different down on the south end of the road, but we're hoping that the car show will go without any hitches. We're just trying to navigate where those cars will go. We expect 80 to 100 cars. We have over 100 vendors signed up this year for Aunt Het. And the last thing I wanted to share about Het is that we are also going to have a blood drive. $40. I am using this time as a little bit of an infomercial. I do apologize. But there's $40 if you sign up for the blood drive that's going to be at Aunt Het from the Blood Connection, and they're really looking forward to being here as well. We'll probably put that Blood Connection van over by the pavilion right there on Jones. So I just wanted to fill everyone in on that, and like I said, these are in your boxes as well as some little F.I. stickers. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thanks, Marnie. Thanks for all you do in the chamber. We appreciate it. Next up, we have the appointment for our Election Commissioner, Margaret McPartlin. Mr. Bell, do you have any?
Yeah, this is for the unexpired term of Mr. Stephen Thomas. He was appointed in April of 2023, so the unexpired term goes through April of 2029. It's a six-year term.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll make a motion to appoint Margaret McPartlin to the Election Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I know she's here tonight, and thank you so much for your willingness to serve our community in this way. This is a really important job, especially for a city that sits in two counties. We always like to have, we like to have extra eyes over our counties. So thank you so much for your service. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor of appointing Margaret McPartlin to the Election Commission? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the August 12th regularly scheduled city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, your report. Welcome back from vacation.
Thank you, Mayor. On our Main Street Streetscape project, the contractor is behind schedule, but they have seen additional crews have arrived to help speed the project along. Before the additional crews arrive, the completion date was estimated to be by the end of February. With the arrival of the additional crews, we are expected to have a completion date before the end of 2025, if everything continues smoothly. Our farmer's market continues each Saturday morning from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and that is through September 27th. The police department's Third Annual Domestic Violence Awareness Walk will be on October 4th, the morning of Aunt Het, at 8:00 a.m. The annual Pinkalicious Breast Cancer Awareness Event will be held on October 11th, and that will be from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. over at the Nirvana Cultural Center on Howard Creek Drive. Jeepers Creepers Truck or Treat Event on October 25th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We already have 190 Jeeps registered, and we will have live music by The Vinyl Junkies. And then on Halloween evening, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will have trick-or-treating on North Main from Fairby Street to Northwestern Street. As Chief Alexander mentioned earlier, we will have three new hires attending our recruit school beginning on September 15th. In recreation, flag football, baseball, and softball, those seasons begin September 2nd. Volleyball season begins September 22nd, and this upcoming Monday starts Miracle Mondays for our Miracle League. Those games will be played every Monday at 6:00 p.m. at Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex. We have some upcoming registrations for winter sports, so basketball and wrestling. Those registrations will be from September 29th through October 31st. Our 55-plus crowd has a fall ceramic painting workshop tomorrow morning at 9:30, and they have their monthly 55-plus night out on September 18th in the Boondocks at 4:30 over at Gray Court. The Yon Center has The Wind in the Willows, a new musical playing September 19th through October 4th. The Chamber of Commerce does have a ribbon cutting on September 26th at 8:30 a.m. for the new addition to Quill and Mander Independent and Assisted Living. And I'm not sure if Marnie mentioned the times, but the car show on the 42nd Annual Aunt Het Festival on October 4th will be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00, and the blood drive will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then the Fountain Inn Museum, starting tomorrow, will have an exhibit called Drawing Laughter and Aunt Het Collection.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clemmer.
Going back to the Main Street project, have we ever explored any opportunities for some of that work to be done at nighttime?
We will certainly ask.
When there's no traffic at nighttime, that might speed the project along. I'm just curious.
Good question.
Also, code enforcement position, we have a fair number of applications for that?
Yeah, we're reviewing those applications now, but I believe we ended up with a decent amount of qualified candidates.
You got more than a handful?
Believe so, yeah.
Okay. That's a critical position, in my opinion. Why to get that revealed? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Bell? Chief Fortenberry, I just, a note, I was recently on a trip, so I didn't get to thank him, but if you could thank Sergeant Hamby for a great 12 hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. with him the other week. That was great to ride along, and I encourage anyone who's interested to contact the police department and for, it's four hours or 12 hours, ride along with our officers and see what they do every day. It was a great experience to do again, and I know Chief, I know Hamby always asks me, when is the next time I'm riding with him? So I'll get my calendar out. So I appreciate it.
Do you have any action?
A little bit, more than the last time. The last time was 45 minutes chasing a cat was the highlight of the evening.
Oh, boy.
Which is a great testament to our community, so thank you. Seeing no other comments from Mr. Bell, we'll move on to unfinished business. First up is second and final reading of ordinance 2025-05, which is our golf cart ordinance. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. House Bill 3292 was signed into law by Governor McMaster and became effective this year on May 22nd. This bill changes the current law of governing, registration, and operation of golf carts. It allows cities and towns to adopt ordinances regulating golf carts. It requires seat belts on the golf cart for children under 12 years of age and requires liability insurance similar to that required of automobiles. In the absence of a municipal ordinance, golf carts are permitted to be operated only during daylight hours, only on a secondary highway where the speed limit is 35 miles per hour or less, only within four miles of the address on the registration certificate, and they are permitted to cross a highway at an intersection where the speed limit is more than 35 miles per hour. So this ordinance, for second reading, if approved, would allow golf carts to be on any roadway in which the speed limit is 35 miles per hour or less, and this is within the city limits of Fountain Inn, to be operated more than four miles from the address on the registration certificate, and to be operated until 11:00 p.m. if the golf cart is equipped with operable illuminated headlights, taillights, and turn signals. So they would not be allowed to be operated in the evening when it's dark up until about a half hour past sunrise. There was a little bit of cleanup, changes done between first and second reading, but one of the main items that was added between first and second reading at the request of Chief Fortenberry was that the provision of a motor vehicle shall not park in any public parking space or on any public property designated as parking for a golf cart. So we just wanted to make, ensure that the police department had the teeth necessary in our ordinances to enforce where automobiles are parking in designated golf cart spaces. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I'll make a motion on second reading to adopt 2025-05. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions?
There are. I thought we had discussed maybe looking at 418.
Yes. That, I believe we do have 418 in here in general, or, no, we, I have that, and I have that. And that's, that's my follow-up. So yes, in a second we will. Mr. Clemmer.
Okay. So are we going to vote?
No, so no, I'm going to offer an amendment. Sorry, that's the short one. Sorry. It was a roundabout way of getting to them. I have an amendment to offer up. That address is also some of what Mr. Thomason had asked about last week. Any other questions? Does anyone? Okay. Yeah, so if it's, one of the amendments I'd like to offer up is that we amend this version to disallow, John Marshall maybe have to clean up, Mr. Moser may have to clean up my language on this for legal purposes, but to disallow golf carts on Highway 418 in the city limits with the exception of Ariel Court to Durbin Road, which is the front entrance to Country Gardens, to the intersection with Durbin, the three-way stop, at which point those residents can then go an alternate route that does not involve 418. That was a question Mr. Thomason had had last week about Country Gardens, and also making sure we didn't allow golf carts on other parts of 418.
So if you come out of Cannon or, yeah, say if you come out of Cannon and take a right, that's not going to be allowed?
No, you'll have to.
Okay.
Down Cannon to Western.
Yeah. You'd have to find an alternate route.
We were wanting to limit with the commercial side.
Yeah, absolutely. Traffic's crazy.
Without the exception, Country Garden wouldn't be able to have a golf cart on any of the roads because there's no way for them to connect.
I almost got hit yesterday on Western. Lady on cell phone, didn't see my turn signal.
Also, she should be warned about this new law in South Carolina, holding her cell phone. I know we posted about it quite a lot, but that's, I'll offer that as a formal amendment in a second to make sure the language is right, but that's, to your point, Mr. Clemmer, would not be allowed anywhere except that. I don't even know, it's less than a quarter of a mile?
They would still be able to cross.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Mr. Moser, should I alter my language?
Sure, sir. I want to offer an amendment, as I heard it, so will add us into subsection B, Roman Act 1, sub B, where either the golf cart should not be operated on South Carolina Highway 418, except added between the intersection of 418 and Ariel Court and the intersection of South Carolina Highway 418 and Gulliver Street slash Durbin Drive.
Durbin Road.
Durbin Road.
Yes. It's okay, I'd like to copy and paste Mr. Moser's word and offer that up as an amendment. I don't know if I could repeat that verbatim, if council's okay with that. Is there, is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Any questions on the amendment first? Okay. I appreciate the other cleanup language on this. I think this is a good, good step for us. I also am glad that it gives the police department enough guidance to really help as our golf cart population grows in Fountain Inn. So with that, we have a motion on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment as stated, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it on the amendment. We now still have the ordinance as amended in front of us, or any other questions on the ordinance amendment?
Yeah, I'd just be curious, Chief Fortenberry, have you seen, has your team seen any issues with underage drivers or anything like that happening after hours, after 11 o'clock?
Usually not after hours, Mr. Clemmer, involving juveniles most of the time where I perceive complaints or evidence of subdivisions and things like that, which is still against the law.
Yeah, right. Okay. I've seen that as well.
And then we will have this posted, obviously, on our website, where we probably should once, after this is, if this is adopted, for you and Amanda to work on, if here's our law in Fountain Inn for folks to abide by. It also may be something to flag. At some point, we may need to look at some signs, particularly as you cross Main Street at 418, of don't go this way, even though it says 35. Like, that's, that's the, I think everyone who has a golf cart typically knows the 35 mile an hour rule, but they may not be aware of the 418 rule if this passes.
That's a good point.
So, and instead of just thinking about what the proper way is to do that. With that, no other questions or comments, all is in favor on adopting ordinance 2025-05 as amended? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all. Next up is new business, which is first reading of ordinance 2025-06, which is a home occupation section of our zoning ordinance. Mr. Bell, you want me to take this, or you got it?
I got it.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance, a text amendment ordinance for first reading 2025-6. So per our current zoning code, a home occupation can be permitted in any of our residential districts if it meets the requirements of sections, section 81A through G. Section 81C currently states that no display of merchandise shall be visible from the street. There shall be no outside storage of equipment, vehicles, or supplies associated with the home occupation. Ordinance 2025-6 would add the following provision to section 81C. For the purposes of this section, products grown naturally, including but not limited to vegetation and/or animal products, shall not be considered supplies. So with our current section 81C, this effectively prohibits home occupations where legal products, such as flowers, fruits, vegetables, et cetera, are grown on the property with the intent to sell. And so if this text amendment is adopted, somebody could, in theory, apply for a business license for the home occupation of growing flowers and then selling those flowers elsewhere. But that, that one provision, while I think it was not intended to necessarily prohibit that, I think by the letter of the law, our code would prohibit that.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I'll make a motion to approve on first reading ordinance 2025-06. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I have some other background. I think I've had a couple constituents reach out over time about this particular ordinance of when they, you know, we allow, for instance, chickens, or we obviously allow folks to have vegetables, or to have flowers, and they, you know, they'd like to consider a home occupation related to those uses, that our code isn't really friendly to that. And so we've worked with Jason on, and Sean on getting some language together to help address some of those concerns. I'll also say to the public, this is the, the other reason I'm happy to see this, this really, really niche or very specific change. This is exactly the type of changes you're going to see in our zoning rewrite, which is forthcoming, probably, I don't know, we may have a workshop later this month even on it. So these are the types of changes that we are going to be asked to think through, and that Jason's already been thinking through with the consultant team, and Sean has, and Slatten. So I think for the public to know, this is, this is an example of how our zoning code can really help, help folks in what we're tasked to do. So, A, this helps, this gives staff some really good guidance to help solve some issues that constituents are having right now with this, with this code. And then also, like I said, this is an example of what we're talking about when we do our zoning rewrite. So essentially, if you're cutting flowers, you'll be able to sell them from your house. They are not going to be considered supplies just because they're growing in your yard. The egg your, the egg your chicken lays is not going to be considered supplies the moment a chicken lays it, you know? So it's a chicken and egg type scenario. So it's just a, an example of our code not really meeting the needs of folks. So that's a little bit more context and background on this. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all is in favor of approval on first reading ordinance 2025-06, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is first and final reading of resolution 2025-06. This is an abandoned textile mill credit certification. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2025-6 certifies certain real property in the City of Fountain Inn as an abandoned textile mill site. Blackstock Development LLC is acquiring Greenville County Tax map numbers ending in 0400 and 0200. The South Carolina Textiles Communities Revitalization Act provides that a taxpayer who rehabilitates a textile mill site may be eligible for either a property tax credit or an income tax credit. So this resolution, city council is being asked to certify that the parcels had in the past a textile mill as provided by the Revitalization Act, that the parcels would qualify as abandoned as provided by the act, and that the parcels are in a distressed area as designated by the Appalachian Council of Governments, and is consistent with the definition of a textile mill site. And so you have a copy of the letter from the Appalachian Council of Governments. You also have a copy of the Phase 1 Environmental. In my opinion, these parcels meet all of those items that council is to certify for. And lastly, that this has no impact on the City of Fountain Inn's revenue. This is a state tax credit.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first and final reading resolution 2025-06?
So much.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Questions or comments? This, my question is more procedural. This is just a statement of fact that this is, this is not necessarily, this, that's all it is, really. It's a certification that this meets those criteria. Under ours, this isn't an approval of council of anything, or this is essentially yes or is, meets the requirements or doesn't?
Correct.
Okay.
The state law requires that the, either the city or county government pass a resolution and certify just those three things, that the parcels had a textile mill in the past, that you have verification from your local cog, designated it in a distressed area, and that it was an abandoned textile mill.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor on first and final reading ordinance 2025-06, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is first, sorry, is reappointment of Judge Rebecca Perkins and Judge William Hawkins for a two-year term. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Judge Rebecca Perkins, formerly Hand, was first appointed to the City of Fountain Inn as our chief judge back in June of 2020. She was reappointed in September of 2022. We would ask that she be reappointed for another two-year term, and Judge William Hawkins is one of our part-time weekend judges. He was first appointed back in September of 2019. He was reappointed in September of 2022, so we're a little bit behind schedule for him, but we would recommend that he be reappointed for another two-year term.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to reappoint Judge Rebecca Perkins and Judge William Hawkins to their two-year terms? William Hawkins to their two-year terms?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions or comments? Hearing, seeing none, all is in favor of reappointing Judge Rebecca Perkins and Judge William Hawkins, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next, last on the agenda for new business is 2025 Employee Handbook. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. The city is currently using the handbook that council adopted back on March 11th of 2021. It has served us well, especially as we created a human resources department for the city. It is kind of best practice to be reviewing your handbook on a, on at least a five-year basis to ensure compliance with state and federal requirements. The proposed revisions for what we're calling our 2025 Employee Handbook is mainly to improve clarity and alignment with recent legal changes. I would say that the vast majority of the provisions being recommended are mainly cleanup and minor in nature, but a couple of, I will run through a few of them. So the 2025 addition adds definition of retaliation. It has clarity around reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, has provisions for pregnant workers under ADA. It defi, or adds the regular full-time equivalent position to our, to our handbook. One of the, I guess, the, the major additions is that upon successful completion of your six-month end-of-int introductory period, you would earn one vacation day and one wellness day. That's one of the main items of feedback that we receive from new hires, is that new hires don't accrue a whole lot of leave at the beginning. Once you've been with the city for a while, we have a very generous accrual process for sick and vacation, but it's very difficult for those new employees to, to accrue. We added some clarity around work week and the hours of work. We added some clarity around inclement weather pay being at the city administrator's discretion. We added that fore-caused drug testing, that the city may choose the type of test. We also added in the provisions for the new hands-free while driving. We added some reporting work-related injury requirements. The other big addition that is sweeping the nation is some provisions regarding artificial intelligence, or AI. We increased our paid parental leave from four weeks to six weeks to mirror that of the state of South Carolina. We added some clarity around unpaid time off, procedure for schedule changes. It allows for the possibility of hybrid or remote work, only in, you know, very specific cases. It allows for more flexibility in terms of our direct deposit, and it adds some clarity around our sick pool program. Either myself or our human resources director would be happy to, to answer any specific questions on the, on the proposed changes. Otherwise, I would say that they are, while they're your red-line version, it appears that there's a lot of changes, but they all are pretty minor in nature. And once adopted, Human Resources Department would begin the process of scheduling training for all employees on the new handbook, and that would be required for all employees to sign off on, on the new provisions.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Employee Handbook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmer?
Is, is there a standard for typically reviewing? It's like every year, every two years? What's, have we established a standard for that?
Honestly, I would say that we're in constant review and getting feedback from department heads and new hires on, on the handbook. Is that what you're talking about, as far as reviewing the handbook?
Yeah, just to make sure that we stay on top of the changes.
Sure. Yeah. And this, all of the, the changes were also vetted by the city's labor attorney as well.
Mr. Clemmer, also too, were members of Smith Smurf, as part of the risk assessment to qualify for a discount for our insurance, they require every four to five years. That's one of the questions on their questionnaire, if you have it under review. So that's one of our checks and balances.
It just, time goes so fast.
It does.
Gets away from you. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I particularly want to thank the staff for putting the six weeks to mirror the state. I know that's something our family's been really passionate about it with our employers throughout the years, so, and experienced it personally before the state. I know a lot of us have with state employees, spouses, so I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor of approval of 2025 Employee Handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Last on the agenda, executive session. After coming out of executive session, council may vote on items discussed during executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements and propose sale or purchase of property related to 100 South Western Street and 610 Fairview Street. Is there a motion to go into executive session for that reason? Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions?